Good afternoon and aloha. We are convening the water and land and the Hawaiian committees here in conference room 016. This hearing is being streamed live online. We will be taking testimony from folks who are in person and online. In the event we are cut off due to technical difficulties, we'll have to abruptly end this hearing and reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at the end of our agenda on Monday, March 21st, starting at 1:00 P.M. Members, let's proceed then with the first item on the agenda, of which is the only one we're doing a joint hearing. And this is HB 1577, House Draft 1. And the agenda is for today, Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. This is relating to the Koholauvi Island Reserve Commission appropriates funds for the Koholauvi Island Reserve Commission and to fund two full-time equivalent permanent positions for the Koholauvi Island Reserve Commission. Good afternoon again. We welcome Michael Naho P. We were so pleased to see you in person now that we're open at the Capitol. And welcome, aloha.
Aloha, chairs for the Water, Land and Hawaii Affairs Committee. Good to be back and all the members, good to be back in person. It's been two years, can't believe. I think people are mentioning that they haven't seen me. They missed seeing me sitting out there on the rails and talking to everybody. But I just want to say, thank you very much for hearing this measure as it comes across. You know, we've been doing a lot of work over the years for a very long time with whatever the legislature has given us. And we're very appreciative of whatever funding we can get. But the key thing for us in this bill is that is the two extra bodies. You know, we have a staff of 14. And not only are we managing the land, the ocean, we run a volunteer program, we run our own boat operation, we have our own patrols, we do our complete outreach that I think a lot of you have seen our outreach efforts and also just working with a lot of different people. And we do it with just 14 people. So two extra bodies to help us out. The ocean is getting rougher for us now. Ocean crossings are getting more and more difficult, and we need more manpower to help us on the boat. So that's what these two bodies that are asking for. And also in the field, I mean, my guys are getting old and the volunteers are getting younger. They seem to be getting like, they're so young nowadays. And they run us ragged, so we just need to help with things out there. And that's all I want to say, but thank you very much. Are there any questions if you have?
Not a question, but I have a comment.
Yes.
And we must commend you and those that are working at all hours of the year. Because, you know, we neighbor islanders fly over. And let me say that I'm so pleased whenever I see Koholauvi. It's getting greener and greener on several, you know, on the part that you folks have designated, that you're pretty much, I guess, ordinance free for now.
For now, yes.
Yeah, but congratulations. And I'm sure that, you know, the folks. And as we say, we see you every year. And it's so sad that you guys have to beg us all the time annually. So let's make sure that we do the people's work and make sure that you're successful, especially for an island that you guys really started from scratch. So I commend you. Chair, any questions?
Any other questions, members? Yes, Senator Fivella.
Senator, you know, you guys do a great job. You know, this is a Hawaiian issue. Yeah. And it's sad that you guys have to beg for money or even have money even coming to you guys from us. This should be a non-stop federally led, federally funded from day one. Every time when it comes to stuff for Hawaii, I want to bring this up again, Prohaba. Yeah, pollute our island, pollute our surroundings. And then they leave. But every other country, they restore them to its natural beauty. What happened to us? See, this is the reason why I frustrated. I mean, I voted the bill when it was in the Senate. I sat down, I kept reading this, that you guys always come. Senator Inouye, just an equator. The sad part about it is that how much federal involvement right now on that island did you guys go to on a daily basis? Having assistance from anything from federal or the federal government on that island?
Well, they've left us back in 2004. They kind of ended their involvement with us. The only thing that we have left with the feds is there was a long-term agreement with the Navy that if we do find any other ordinance in areas that were clear, they will come back. And we've called them about two or three times in the past. And they've come and they destroyed this stuff. But you know, one of the things that helped us that we had a position on staff that was ordinance specialist. We lost that during the COVID crisis as one of the vacancies. And we haven't restored it, but I'm lucky. My base camp manager is also trained. I have like 15, 20 years experience with ordinance. So I do what I can do, but I kind of worried about the future when I'm finally, you know, gone from the island. A lot of that experience, you know, I built the base camp when I was in the military and I ran the cleanups for the government, for the federal government at times. So I try to bring all that information and those connections I had. But when the Navy left in '04, it's kind of off to us to do whatever we can. I try to keep it going over these years.
So the reason for them leaving, when they gave a reason, like they said, like they pawed, but it didn't offer, wiped their hands?
Yeah, in the MOU that the state and the Navy signed back in '93 with the turnover. And I talked to Senator Danny Inouye about this too at the time was that he wanted the Navy to be committed to a certain period of time, but he didn't want to tie them forever. That was his negotiating posture of getting the funding. So he had to, he had to make a deal with, you know, within the federal government. I understand he did that, but you know, that doesn't help us.
But the reason why I bring this up, Chair, because going forward on the historicness and just the island itself, yeah. When we bombed other nations and other countries, they brought back their livelihood, their farming, their everywhere of life. But it seems like when it comes to Makua, Koholauvi, Red Hill, Prohaba, they can just make number two in our yacht and wash their hands and say they're done. But in any other country, they restore them to its natural beauty, to historicness. I just kind of, it's not your cool honor because it's something that we need to do. And I'll be reaching out to our delegates. But the Navy should be responsible for all the contamination they're doing to our Ina. Continue to fund it and not making you guys scrape and scrabble for funding that you guys should be abundant. Because you guys are doing the work. I commend you guys on that island. And I thank you guys for what you guys doing for the people of Hawaii.
Thank you very much. I just want to one comment that even though the organization of the federal government is not providing us direct support, it's the individuals within the military that come and volunteer. We have like National Guard units and we have the Nakoa training. The Nakoa young leaders of the National Guards have come and volunteered their own time. We've been working with different agent units, military units, to see if they can contribute whatever they can on their own time and with their commander's support. But nothing official, but it's been a lot of the military people in Hawaii, they want to help out. But we don't have it from, you know, the big organizational level. Mostly the Kamai'ano on the ground who wants to help out. So that's what we're doing.
No, no, that's great. We're on a local side. Because nobody would volunteer for cleanup in Japan. There was P. Fix everything in Japan. They never do nothing here in Hawaii. We get local guys on the lower levels to volunteer. And that's not, that's not right. That's not normal.
Thank you, Senator. Members, any questions?
Just clarification. So you're asking for, it looks like 572,000 total? I mean, 500,000 for operating and then 72,000 for the two positions?
72 is the half, the six months of their salary. It's the, yeah, because that's how they normally tell us to do, put six months in. And then in the next year, you ask for the full amount.
Okay, so I was wondering why it was so low? Because it's 72,000 for two, but that's for just for half the year?
Yeah.
Well, actually, those are, they're not that high paying. So it's like field workers. They're, I think it's in the 40 and 32 is the salary. Or in that range, 38, 34, you know, it's in that neighborhood.
Fiscal year 23?
Yes.
Okay, and it's a A funds, general funds?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, we do a lot of work for not to watch space.
Yeah, I was surprised how low. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mahalo. We have on Zoom land out there, Manuel Kulo Lo'io testifying for Ke'kai O'Kulo Lo'io. I think, I believe, Kulo Lo'io. Aloha, Manuel. Are you there?
Aloha, Senator Inouye. Can you hear me?
Oh, we sure can.
It's wonderful to hear your voice, Senator Lorraine Inouye. It's been 20 years since I last testified in front of you. Chair Inouye, Vice Chair Coloma Keith Agarone, members of the Committee on Water and Land, Mr. Lucha, Mr. Fivella, Mr. Rivera, Chair Miley Shimabukuro of the Hawaiian Affairs, Vice Chair Ke'ho Kalole, members Akasio Ihara. Fivella, I thank you for your support today on House Bill 1577, HB 1, that appropriates money to the Koholauvi Island Reserve Commission and money to support two full-time equivalent positions as previously mentioned by Executive Director Mike Naho P. We need your help, your continuing help to continue this promise of perfecting our stewardship on Kana'lo. It's not an easy one. But we thank you for your continuing support of all the good work that has been done from the early 70s to the 1994 when the state took title to this land of Koholauvi. And thank you for your help, man.
Mahalo, Manuel. We hear you clearly and mahalo you for all you've done as well for the people of Hawaii. We do have members' comments from Department of Budget and Finance. And there has been great support on this measure. We have support from the county of Maui, Michelle McLean, and Chair Alice Lee of the city and county of the city of Maui. But she's testifying in support as an individual. And these are supports. We do have Herb Lee Jr. testifying for Pacific American Foundation in support. We do have opposition from Kenneth Conklin that testifying for Center for Hawaii Sovereignty Studies. And these are all in support. Anella Evans, Robert Cole, Hannah Ana'e, Dana Ke'ave, Jennifer Shupalik, Samantha Alvarado, Johann Winkler, Pamela Zinker, Margaret Palver, Nicole Cody, Julia Rubenstein, Kalani Fukumoro, Carol Marie K. Lee, Daviana McGregor, Dr. Benton Pang, Bob Lowe, Terry Kavagan, Cassandra Smith, Chuck Chimera, Tammy Harp, Nathan Nishimura. Members, these are all in support of the measure. We do have, I think the chairs would like to offer there's a testimony from those that are present. Anyone else wants to speak? But you're all in support of the measure. We mahalo you for being here in present as well. Chair, members, instead of proceeding to recess, the chairs already have made a decision to support the measure. So we agree, and both chairs agree that we're going to make a decision at present. So our chairs has recommended that we pass this measure with amendments. We'll do a perfect, we'll perfect the effective date to July 1st, 2022, and we'll adopt technical and non-substantive amendments. Members, any discussion? Hearing none. The Committee on Water and Land, Senator Mr. Lucha. The chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1577, House Draft 1, with amendments, perfect the effective date to July 1st, 2022, and adopt technical non-substantive amendments. Chair votes aye.
This is for the Committee on Water and Land, members. We are voting on HB 1577, HD 1. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Agarone is excused. Senator Mr. Luchus, aye. Senator Rivera, Senator Fivella.
Aye.
Chair with four votes, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Thank you for Hawaiian Affairs saying recommendation. Vice Chair Ke'ho Kalole for the vote, please.
Members passing with amendments. Chair Shimabukuro.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Akasio.
Aye.
Senator Ihara.
Aye.
Senator Fivella.
Aye.
Chair recommendation adopted.
Mahalo. Mahalo. This concludes the both Committees on Water and Land and the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to the hearing on Hawaiian Affairs. We have a bill and three resolutions to be heard. The time, this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. We have to probably end. We'll be discussing outstanding business on Thursday, March 17th, 1:00 P.M., Room 16. Audio will be muted and video disabled until us return to testify. And if there's any errors in the closed captioning, we apologize. And you can see the measures online on the Capitol's website, legislature's website. Let's see. And so with me is myself, Chair Shimabukuro, Vice Chair Ke'ho Kalole, and Senators Akasio, Ihara, and Fivella. We're going to start first with HB 2511. And as everyone has hopefully been aware, this is the big measure that appropriates $600 million into and out of the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund for DHHL to fulfill its fiduciary duties to beneficiaries. Requires DHHL to send any report to legislature. And thank you so much, Chair Ila for being here to testify and support.
Thank you, Chair Shimabukuro, Vice Chair Ke'ho Kalole, members of the committee. We stand that testimony in strong support of SB 2511. And I would be available for questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Go through the testifiers and then we'll, Mike, call you later for questions. Next, we have the Attorney General with comments. Oh, I'm sorry.
The test, I'm trying to find a testimony and it's not, it doesn't seem to be online.
Oh, that's right. I need to announce that. If you go to the portal, it's on our portal. Yeah, if you go to the portal, I have my print goods. Yeah, unfortunately, it was a technical glitch. Testimony that was submitted through the public website unfortunately got mixed up. And so Clerk's Office is working on that now. But yeah, but it, but for, I think I have it correct on my list and it's correctly on the portal now. So yeah, sorry about that. Okay, so yeah, Attorney General's Office?
Yeah. Is there a way to send it?
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Ryan Kanakoaoli, Deputy Attorney General, testifying on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We submitted late testimony offering comments on Sections 4 and 5 of the bill. My apologies for the late testimony. Just to summarize the matter, regarding Section 4 of the bill, we identified a clause found on page 4, lines 15 through 19, that appears to exempt the general fund appropriation from the executive budget and allotment process. This clause appears to conflict with the separation of powers doctrine, which provides in part that when it comes to general fund appropriations, the governor has the authority to determine the manner in which those funds are spent. To address this concern, we suggested striking that identified clause. Regarding Section 5 of the bill, related to appropriations out of the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund, NHRF, we do believe it is appropriate to exempt DHHL's expenditures out of that fund from the executive budget and allotment process. So as such, we offered suggested language to add on to Section 5, which is essentially the language that we struck from, suggested striking from Section 4. We just suggest putting that language into Section 5 of the bill. Thank you for your opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Kanakoaoli. Appreciate. Okay. Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. They may also be on Zoom.
Not present, Chair.
Okay. State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support. Mahalo.
Aloha, auinala. Eka lunaho o malu Shimabukuro, kahope noho Ke'ho Kalole, amenah lala, committee members. The Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities, we support this bill 2511, HD 2. And we're in strong support in memory of Elizabeth Lopez. My name is Osimo Arista. And I represent the Council for Daintree Bartoldis. And with me is self-advocate Kylie Swan. Thank you for allowing us to testify. Aloha'ia'un no na nino. I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much for being here and coming in person.
Thank you.
Okay, next we've got, see. Oh, Aha'oku Advisory Committee?
Thank you, aloha. Hi, thank you, Senator Shimabukuro. And welcome aloha to the rest of the committee. Aha'oku stands in strong support of this bill. And we will be available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Limano. Hawaii County Council District 3 in support.
First.
Hello?
Aloha, members.
Aloha.
Councilmember Su Li Loi, I stand in strong support of House Bill 2511, House Draft 2, and the refinements made in House Draft 2. As a member of the Hawaii County Council, I have the privilege and honor of serving two homestead communities here in Hilo, Konne'eva, and Kilkaha. I trust the committee could assist me with encouraging the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to engage and complete within six months of this appropriation a list of housing options and choices elevated from the beneficiaries themselves. This would assist myself and other members of the council to look at opportunities in which the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and the county can begin to partner better and bridge this and other funding that will be made available through our Build Back Better monies and the ARPA funds, which will all go to help and assist all of the beneficiaries within the Hawaiian Homelands Trust. I stand on the balance of my written testimony and ready to answer any questions the committee may have.
Mahalo, Councilwoman Li Loi. Appreciate. Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement in support. Aloha, Kohio.
Aloha, senators. Aloha, Chair Shimabukuro, Vice Chair Ke'ho Kalole. You know, CNHA has been at the forefront advocating for this bill's passage. We're running commercials. We also have been mobilizing our community. This is a short bill, as you know. It's probably the largest investment that would be made to support our Native Hawaiian community. We've heard the stories from our waitlisters that have waited. Many have passed on. And we want to urge this committee to ensure that this bill makes it. You know, this is providing much more than housing for these families. It would provide them means to survive in our homeland. And as we know, more than half of our population now live outside of Hawaii. And that trend will continue unless intervention occurs. And so thank you for taking up this measure. Thank you for offering solutions to address this waitlist. And we'll be available for comments and continue to support as this are written testimonies on file and we'll stand on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lewis. T.R.A. Lawrence in support?
Not present, Chair.
And we've got Kawi Amsterdam in support. Oh, yes.
Auinala'ia'oko au'pa'loa. Shalom aleichem. Aloha to Chairman Shimabukuro, Vice Chairman Ke'ho Kalole, also members of the commission, and our friends and neighbors. Again, aloha and shalom. I represent the Mamaloa Foundation, also as a Kanakama'oli and a Jew and members of the community of Jews, as well as our Kanakama'oli community here in Hawaii'ne. I support the HB 2511, HD 2. It is highly appropriate and suitable in order to do this in light that it has been mandated in the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act of 1920. And so the state is mandated to do this and in order to meet the requirements of the law in order to do what's right and to be responsible. It's important to support this important measure at this time. Thank you for your consideration. Also having come from doing sign waving to pray and to help the people of Ukraine, the Ukrainians, as part of our aloha, as Kanakama'oli, as Jews, as members of Hawaii'ne, I encourage everyone to pray and to help at this time for freedom of the Ukrainians. Again, I support the measure. Mahalo for your support. And aloha to, and mahalo to you and our Kanakama'oli, our Jews and our Hawaiian, our population here in Hawaii'ne. Mahalo and aloha.
Mahalo. Next, we have Kapua Kili'iko Kamai in support.
Aloha'oko. May I?
Oh, yeah.
Well, for this opportunity to share with you my vana'ou on this long-awaited funding bill. I appreciate the legislature's gesture of funding the department, something that we have been waiting for so long. I am a blessed beneficiary. I have my home. I speak for those that do not have their home. I speak for my family that have been waiting since the 70s so long that they have numbers beside, that they have area designations. When on Oahu, you can still designate which part of the island, which homestead you're looking for. That's how long some of my ohana have been waiting. Not only on Oahu, but on other islands as well. This funding will help my department, my commissioners, to make the right decisions for us. I appreciate the $100,000 that the Department and the legislature is considering to offer for mortgage. And I am having a hard time understanding the pushback on it. We're only one, once we have our home to reside in. What else do we need? When two of us beneficiaries marry, we have to surrender one home. The means that we surrender is still our choice. But we do that willingly for the next beneficiary. His principal heel's vision to serve his people. And from his grave, he continues to serve us through you, the legislature. I appreciate this. And I hope my fellow beneficiaries appreciate and recognize it. You may not all agree. As we all know, it even happens in your own household between the one that you love the most. But let's agree to disagree and holo mu'ua with the benefit of the many. I also thank my department chair, who sits behind me, and all of our commissioners. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have Regina Nani Peterson. Aloha, making the journey soon. Comments.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Chair Mary just request just a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine. Today, we sit here as Russia invaded the Ukraine, a small nation facing the might of a military superior nation. Our universal support is rightfully with the people of Ukraine. Every global leader, including the President of the United States, universally violation of the people's sovereignty and international law. And I repeat, the violation of the people's sovereignty and international law. Does this sound familiar? I'm here today to testify to your committee, who only really exist as and has authority because of the violation of the sovereignty of the Hawaiian people and the violations of international law. If there had been no violations of sovereignty of the Hawaiian people and no violations of international law, there would be no H H C A. There would be no Committee on Hawaiian Affairs. There would be no state of Hawaii. I assure this committee, the Hawaiian race does not need rehabilitation, as it states in this bill. We know who we are. The only truthful thing about this bill is that it is a bill for an act. This government continues to act as though it is legitimate and has authority. And under international law, however, it does not. The opening language of this bill, section one, paragraph two, where you have agreed to faithfully carry out the spirit of H H C A for the rehabilitation of the Hawaiian race is as offensive as it is racist. The only thing that has been faithfully carried out is the violation of the sovereignty of the Hawaiian people and the continued violation of international law. The only spirit this government has exhibited is one of greed and one of fundamental racism. It is the government body as a whole that is in need of rehabilitation, not Hawaiians. Hawaiians have been denied the rights of their sovereign constitution while this government imposes its own. To comment on the substance of the bill, of a bill that is inadequate, cleverly written, slanted, and violates the spirit, the very spirit of the H H C A, would be to acknowledge an authority this governing body does not have, again, under international law. If you want to refute this account of history, do so in the court of international law. I ask you and your Senate and House colleagues to write legislation that requires the United States to submit the facets to a binding judgment under international law by the World Court, the International Court of Justice in the Hague. Do this and let the truth be known. And do the right, do right by the people of this place. When the Russian government is achieving, what the Russian government is achieving today with guns, the United States has cleverly and dishonestly achieved with a stroke of a pen in eighteen ninety-eight and again in nineteen fifty-nine. This so-called governing body, just like the Russians today, are violating the people's sovereign rights. The so-called governing body, just like the Russians today, are violating international law. And yes, there is moral equivalence to it. There's violence in the poverty rates of Hawaiians. There's violence in the health conditions of Hawaiians. There's violence in the addiction rates of Hawaiians. There's violence in the incarceration rates of Hawaiians. There's violence in the removal of Hawaiian inmates to the continent. There's violence in the homeless rates of Hawaiians. There's violence in the diminished life expectancy of Hawaiians. There is violence in the continuing daily trauma of Hawaiians that this so-called governing body chooses to perpetuate by continuing these violations of the sovereign rights of Hawaiians and continued violations of international law. The violence is a consequence of the marginalization this governing body has placed upon a sovereign people in our own country. We continue to show the governing body, this governing body, aloha. And this governing body has continued to show us legislated acrimony. Those are the facts. It is time for the governing, for this governing body to do right by the people of this place, to help us make it right. As our ancestors say, kokua aku, kokua mai. He la i hola, kano hana ohana. Help and be helped such as family.
Mahalo. I think that's all the testimony I had that was going to be in person in terms of pre-submitted. Now, is anyone else here who wants to testify on this measure? Macao or if you, is your support or?
Macao, Matthew Villanueva, for the record. I just call everything she's it. Yeah, but also I do support this bill in, in that is not looked at as a settlement. Because to settle for what this is, is really just, it's just crumbs. And it feels like the hundred thousand is to be bought off. And there are, there are circumstances where that could be beneficial, right? So it says somebody has already invested into a home, right? And that hundred thousand dollars would take them off the list and allow them to invest into what, you know, what they've already established, right? So in that case, I think it would be a good thing, right? But I just, I also want to point out that six, six hundred thousand dollars, right? If we look, it makes, I just want to make sure and be clear that that's not, that's not forever, right? That's not a sole word that said ceiling on there. And I'm not sure if that means like this is settled or is that just this year? But I just want to make, make sure that you guys don't allow any language to enter this bill that would make this a settlement. Because there's so much more that is owed to this particular situation, these people and so forth. Thank you for letting me share.
Mahalo. Anyone else care to testify on this measure, HB two, five, one, one? That's okay. There's a lot of, tons of written testimony as well that's almost all in support, pages and pages of it. So mahalo to all that took the time to submit your written testimony. We really appreciate it. Okay, so members at this point, any questions? Yes, Senator Yehara.
I'm not sure if someone from Budget and Finance is here or online, Craig, you're right.
Austin, anybody from B N F online?
I can just say my question. Does there, someone from Budget and Finance?
I don't see any, Senator Yehara.
Maybe I can just say the question. In, in Craig, your eyes, Budget and Finance testimony on page two, he indicates that there's recipients of the federal American Rescue Funds are required to maintain the same amount of proportion of spending for lower and higher education in Hawaii. And I wanted to ask him how much by this six hundred million, which is an increase in spending, is there, how much would, would the legislature or the state be required to spend for second, elementary, secondary, and higher ed in order to maintain the same proportional spending?
Good question, yeah. And if anybody?
If he didn't put any numbers in it, but it, but it basically said that there's that requirement.
Okay. Okay, so hopefully we can get some follow up answer to that. Other questions?
I have an additional question for Budget and Finance, even though they're not here, but just to pose it so that we can maybe look into it is their comments or thoughts on the League of Women Voters suggestion that a trust is established rather than a special fund and just some thoughts about that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Vice Chair Kilkaha.
Yeah, I guess for D H H L, can you? You know, the language of the bill itself is pretty broad. And so, much of the details of how the money is to be expended have been put forth mostly in, you know, statements to the media and the bill is still proceeding. We could, the legislature could choose to add in additional details or proviso the money to make it clear exactly how we intend the department to expend it. Can you provide some detail on the, the down payment proposal?
The down payment proposal, as it is envisioned in the House version, is to provide up to one hundred thousand dollars to applicants on the waitlist for either down payment assistance in purchasing a home either on or off the homestead. Currently, it would allow for the paying down an existing mortgage. And you could have a, some, some lesses have either past oil or an agricultural lot. And they've chosen to build a residence on that. They're still on the residential waitlist. So this would allow them to transfer that position on the waitlist or give up their existing homestead dwelling and choose to use the down payment assistance to purchase again, either something on or off the homesteads. Then there are other, there's, the bill is broad enough that it would allow us to provide sums of monies to fund existing development projects that we have on the horizon, some turn shovel-ready projects. That's what the bill says at this point.
And so, how would the, so for the individuals who choose to pursue down payment assistance, how would the recognition of that support to those beneficiaries be registered?
How would the recognition of it? Well, the, okay, so I'm going to try to answer.
Do they come off the waitlist?
They do, they do. They would have to.
How, how does that happen?
Once the, once the benefit is, is presented, we would remove them from the waitlist.
So there, there are no specific provisions in this bill to amend the act to facilitate that? That could be executed by rule and by the commission or by policy of the department?
It could be, the waitlist is a creature of the department through administrative rules. However, in this bill that, that in the bill, should it survive the legislature and be enacted into law, the legislature could make it very, very clear that its desire is for anyone receiving the assistance to, to be removed from the waitlist. That would make it stronger.
Well, but the, if we do, if we elect not to do that, would it be the, the position of the department at this point to either enact or amend rules to account for that? And the whole point would be for us to have an understanding of how many people this proposal actually takes off the list so that we know where we're at?
Yeah, so I don't believe that we would have to affect rules. Rules would take a year and a half. It sort of goes against the intent of the measure. We would just make it a requirement, voluntary requirement. It is voluntarily, so someone who does not wish to participate in this benefit has ability to remain on the waitlist and wait for future projects to come forward.
Right, but the, the reason I asked the question is there must be some way for us to account for beneficiaries who elect to take the down payment assistance, purchase a home, and no longer need the, need to stay on the waitlist. Because in my mind, if you don't, then how are we able to take account? You know, ten, fifteen years from now, maybe if they change their mind and want to go back on the waitlist.
One of the, it's envisioned that one of the conditions of accepting the offer would be to not get back on, you would not be permitted to get back on the waitlist.
And that would be facilitated in some sort of agreement when they sign to accept the?
Yes, yeah. No one's being forced to, no one's being forced.
And you're saying there are no rules are necessary to execute that now you could, the department could just do that?
That is our, our read.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions, Senator Yehara?
Of the six hundred million that you envision as, as to how it may be spent, is there any amount of that could be used, spent using bonds?
Using bonds to finance it?
Of, of what's contemplated of the end result of the expenditure funds is of that six hundred million dollars in cash, would you, if there, is there an advantage to using bonds to, to get more funding out of that with the six hundred million or, or is it, you think it's best to juice the cash? So the first question is, is it, are, do, if any amount of the anticipated expenditures qualify for spending it as through bonds rather than cash?
I, I, I believe that that's a possibility. However, at this moment, I believe the legislative intent of the, of the House as it, as it's spelled out in the bill would not include that.
So if it did, I'm trying to get a sense of what percentage of that would it, let's say, you know, if, if it was three hundred million for cash and three hundred million for bonds, is that, you know, is that an advantage in terms of the objectives of the, of the, in terms of increasing the funding?
Bonds would always be, be advantaged or be an advantage to leveraging infrastructure money. In the Senate version of the bill, you know, about four hundred and fifty million is allocated towards construction projects that are either in shovel-ready or could be shovel-ready in seven years. So there's, the Senate version and the House version are a little bit different. It is actually entirely up to the legislature how they would want us, they would want to see us implement the project.
I presume that, let's say, if, if so many million are for infrastructure, that by using bond money, that it would stretch it beyond the two years. Typically, I think bond money you can use.
The, the appropriation or the authorization from the legislature would, would have to include language that would allow that money to be, to be spent over a longer period of time, because that would be the revenue on which the bonds would be repaid.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Other questions? Well, I guess as a follow-up to that, I mean, is that an amendment that you would support? If we were to say that this would include bonding, you know, authority for D H H L and use of the funds and that we would then also extend the amount of time that these funds could be expended?
At this time, Chair, I would not entertain that amendment because I believe the House, the intent of the House is to get the money out as quickly as possible to allow folks who have been waiting on the waitlist for a long period of time to take advantage and to, and to get into housing.
Okay, okay. Another question I had is after hearing the Attorney General's testimony, would you support those amendments that they, they say are needed?
Yes, we would.
Okay. And then I saw a news article saying that you folks did a survey and forty-five percent, I think, of the people on the waitlist would, would support the hundred thousand dollar option, you know, for home, homeless.
That is, that is correct. It was a quick survey, but scientifically sound, which was done at the request of the Senate so that we could provide. which was done at the request of the Senate so that we could provide information about, you know, how many people would actually be interested.
That's, that's a flopping number, actually. So let's get them, so 100,000 each for, because there's about 28,000 on the waitlist.
There is.
And then 14,000, I guess, accepted the 100,000. Is my math correct? That'd be about 1.5 million?
1.5 billion.
A billion.
Yeah, so we, clearly there's not enough, there's not enough in the 600 million dollar allocation to take care of 14,000 people on the waitlist.
Yeah. We want the $100,000.
Up to 100,000.
Okay. Okay, but that's, but that was really good data.
I have to thank my deputy for putting that together.
Yeah, that was really quick. Okay. And I know there's discussion about, you know, whether to keep those, you know, say you do accept $100,000, whether to keep those properties in the trust. And so I don't know, that, that would come later, I guess, to the commission and.
There, there could be a condition that gives the department first right of refusal. There could be a condition that would share in any appreciation. So there, there are additional conditions to be worked out.
Yeah, exciting. Other questions, Senator Coste?
Yeah, um, so, up hand, do you know what the response rate was for the survey?
You know, that I don't know, but I could get that information from Tyler.
Just curious. And then I don't know if you were ever to see Tax Foundation's testimony, but there are questions around what is, what are you folks doing to use that federal HUD block grants of the 55 million?
I think as, as was testified to in the House, the Nahazda money, and I want to dispel this, this misinformation. The Nahazda money, the $55 million that was accumulated up to, up to a certain period of time has either all been spent or is allocated to be spent. Okay, and that now, now you saw from yesterday's announcement by Senator Schatz that he's ready to up our annual Nahazda allocation to $22.3 million, which we feel and which he agrees is a testament to the department's ability to spend that federal money.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I know you, the department has done a survey amongst its beneficiaries and I would like to see the, you know, if you folks contracted to get a, like a professional.
We did not.
Oh, but you said it was scientifically sound.
We checked with, we, we checked the results. We checked the amount of, the amount of responses and it fits within general, general polling. What do you call it? Margins of error.
I see. What, is CNN still on?
I'm still here, Senator.
Would, have you folks done your own engagement on the, the down payment assistance proposal? What has the feedback been like on, on that? Because as you know, the Senate version of this bill allocates a significant amount of that appropriation to hard development costs versus the down payment proposal.
Thank you, Senator, for the, for the question. We haven't done a poll like the Department of Mine Homeland has done. However, you know, through research and through conversations we've been having with the department, you know, just to provide clarification, because there's been a lot of misunderstanding with respect to the $100,000. This is not a, we're not, nobody's going to get bought off the list. This is a means to give them options. It's, it's options because it's clear there's not enough money and you need to be creative in order to tackle this waitlist. So this is a means in which people can purchase a home that's not necessarily on the homestead in which they can leverage. You know, you can't, you don't have equity in a homestead house. You can on a house outside the market. So you could borrow money against it to build your wealth. So this is a creative approach that is necessary to provide options to these waitlisters so they don't die on the list. And not everybody wants to live on the homestead where you gotta listen to fireworks all year round. So this is an alternative. It's a creative way, it's, it's a creative way to address the needs of our people. And so I, I think it's a great option.
I never knew Kanoe had homestead because we've got fireworks all year round. Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
I mean, this discussion almost makes me think, I mean, gee, if the entire amount could be used just for this mortgage and dumping assistance, that'd be, now 6,000 would be helped. I mean, so that's, I mean, it's almost like, gee, maybe she just put the whole thing toward that. If 14,000 wanted, this bill could help 6,000 of those 14,000, so.
We look, we look forward to the House and the Senate coming up with language that will help us effectively spend 600 million dollars.
Yeah, okay, because the House person gives you that flexibility. Okay, any other questions? Okay, okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on. Oh. Do you want to add to your testimony briefly?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to mention that my understanding is this would be to expedite the distribution or the, the lands so that our Kanakamaoli can actually have, have a land in which to habitate. And this money that is being addressed right now was due to a delinquency on the part of payments. And so those are two points there. Now, I would, I would highly recommend that there be an overseen also of payments that will do, that will be paid so that this problem doesn't continue to rise. Now, if the, if the payments are made, this, this percentage that's supposed to be made, then this will be able to meet a lot of the expenses that we have, that, that are, that are, that are to be met. And the other thing is, if, like you were talking about bonds, it's a different issue, I think. If you get bogged down in bonds, that's not really directly distributing the property and, and homestead, habitations for Kanakamaoli. So this is another issue, I think, that could bog down the problem. So I think that payments should be made so that we don't have this ongoing delinquency issue that also, like for instance, when people go and buy their passes to, to go on the bus, they just go and they, they can expedite it by just speeding it up. And so maybe by having the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, because I think the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is the one that made this issue, brought this issue to the forefront and made it a big issue. So maybe by their also trying to divide, provide their assistance and support, it could expedite the, the matter even, even greater. So that's, I think my emphasis is expediting it. Just do what we're doing, but speed it up. And don't get bogged down in investments because I don't think that was part of our understanding that it would be invested. And just expedite it and keep, keep the responsibility of payments each month, each year, and not have a delinquency so that we have this ongoing issue. Mahalo, aloha. Tada raba.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to SCR 46, SR 41, requesting the Hawaiian Homes Commission to conduct a feasibility study on the creation of an enforcement division for DHHL. And we have DHHL in support. That's all we had. Oh, yeah, and Naneo Lo also in support. Anyone else? Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Thank you, LeHula.
Aloha, Chair Shimabukura, Vice Chair Kilkaukali, members of the Senate Committee on Hawaiian Affairs. Apologies, Chair Ila needed to cover another hearing going on now in the House tradition Hawaiian Affairs. But on this resolution, we are providing support. The, the department did, the commission approved the proposal to allow for law enforcement. We recognize the need and what's going on in our communities and, and see the value in that. Unfortunately, that bill did not make it, did not finalize into the administration's package, but we are looking at the bills that are moving right now that would allow for law enforcement statewide coordination as a possible option. And this feasibility, feasibility study could be another opportunity to look at what would work best for the Department of Mine Homeland. So with that, we just thank you and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Anyone else here for SCR 46, 41? You seen the members, any questions?
Yes.
Questions for?
For DHHL?
Yeah. Hi, thank you. Who do you envision doing, conducting the feasibility study? Is this the commission?
So our recommendation in the testimony is to actually amend it to the department because the commission does it typically contract for services that's done by the department. Usually, these types of studies are, are typically done by our planning office. So our planning office does a lot of our beneficiary consultations and our studies and we usually contract very experienced vendors in this area. We'd obviously find those who maybe have some expertise that can lend the department because obviously this isn't, this isn't really in our wheelhouse in the sense that it requires probably more enforcement and specialized expertise. But we're grateful that we at least have Commissioner Awol, who used to formerly work for the Department of Land and Natural Resources as a, the do care section. So we believe that expertise will be helpful and he currently serves on the commission.
I guess, because so, and a concern would be to make sure that there's a broad range of stakeholders, but like, how would the department ensure that there's a broad range of stakeholder perspectives in the engagement of this study?
So typically, when we do studies, when we have engaged the services of a vendor, we usually require beneficiary consultation as a part of that process. So that will be worked into the study so that we can engage. Because every county is different too in this situation. You're dealing with different county police departments. So we will require that kind of consultation to hopefully kind of create it to work for each community because it's, again, it's going to differ by county, right, we're dealing with. So, yeah, that will be part of what we typically put in our agreements with our vendors is to incorporate that component as well. That's typically what we do.
So as far as beneficiary consultation from the overwhelming perspective of beneficiaries in my community, they don't feel consulted and they don't feel like there is an adequate engagement. And so a concern, that's what I'm bringing to this study is just to simply say, we're going to add beneficiary consultation, but yet the consultation process is not feeling inclusive of, of beneficiaries in Kilkauka and Panaeva that I can speak to that specifically. And the other question I have is this last whereas clause, without police powers, the enforcement section does not currently have the authority to even prevent trespassers from traversing through sensitive DHHL managed lands now. And so my question is, is it, is, is this proposing that County of Hawaii, for example, cannot go at this time into Hawaiian Homes communities? And if that's the case, like I'm just trying to understand more about where this is coming from. Because when we had our hearing on the, the Senate bill, it was clear that it's in the jurisdiction of HPD or Honolulu or Hawaii Police Department, depending on the scenario, to, to enforce the laws and that, and that they can go into DHHL. So I'm, I'm kind of missing that bigger background to this, the drive behind this.
But I think what's the, as I understand, the resolution or the proponent is concerned about is that this is occurring now even with that police authority. And so I believe the proponent wants, and again, a lot of it is the legislation that didn't make it into the governor's package that is asking for even more enforcement authority for the department, not to take away from the counties, but concerned that even with this police enforcement that the counties have, it's not being implemented right now. And so I know in the bill too, that that's one of the language that's been included, right, to make sure that the counties, this whole state law enforcement authority doesn't reduce the, the obligation the counties have and specifically.
So it seems like the issue would lie in the, the department, the police department's not enforcing the law or responding in that sense.
Yes, you're correct, Senator.
So then to make another, so that can apply, then we could just make many enforcement agencies, right?
You're correct, Senator.
Seems like it doesn't address the issue. Okay. I, 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 I know. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, yes.
Aloha.
Aloha.
While I support this resolution, I do want to respond, or actually I was going to say, it's surprising to me as a almost 30-year homesteader that, oh, 45 years, that our department does not have this power, this authority. But it has become more apparent over the past decade that there is some problem with their authority. So I'm so grateful that they are, have identified what that problem is and it seems to be in the lack of their policing authority. Because I have seen our people evicted. I have seen our enforcement unit out in our homestead in Waianae. I have actually heard of them being, have private residence when this occurred for my own family member. When she shared with me that our department folks were there, I was flabbergasted. Of course, it was overkill on that eviction, which was due to the travesty of all of the scammers that was occurring in the early 2000s and when our poor people got caught up in that. But that was a, a private matter that our enforcement people were there to improve when the DOI came. I'm not sure if current Commissioner Awol was a part of our department enforcement at that time, but he was definitely there defending or protecting the DOI personnel. And I thought that was inappropriate, but since they were on Hawaiian homelands, perhaps it was worth it for our people to see our people there at the meetings because sometimes we get passionate about various items. And when the DOI came, I think you all recognized the passion and the education that came out prior to it, which is why our people responded immediately to it overwhelmingly. But getting back to our homesteads, when our homestead people call 911, the confusion is 911's response, even if it is from the officer, is that this is not an HPD matter. This is a Hawaiian homes matter. That's the response that we get. They direct our people to the association board, which has absolutely no power unless you're part of the new homesteads that have DCCNRs, which Waianae Valley and several others are not. But we want to help our people too, but we have no mana in authority. Our authority comes when neighbors try to be good neighbors. That's where our authority comes from and not everybody recognizes that. So I support it. And while I support a unity of enforcement agents from the various divisions and departments, our department is unlike other fake state departments. Our department serves our people. We need to maintain a sense of independence and yet unify with. So we can come with you, but when we call you, you need to come to us because they have two, over 200,000 acres to manage. You don't have the staff to add more kuliana to that. So I want to add to this resolution that not only that there be a feasibility on the need for their policing authority, but also on how much more would these departments, such as the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, how much more funding do they need to adequately enforce the rules that have been in place? Because our beneficiaries have been to the commissioners. Because our beneficiaries have been to the commissioners meeting. They have pleaded with the commissioners. Why do we have to wait, watch, observe, report, wait, 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 report, wait, wait, wait? Why does that occur? So if it is a policing authority, I'm asking you all to please put this resolution forward and resolve the authority issue of our department while keeping our people to our department and then helping others as needed, as well as receiving the help when needed.
Mahalo. Okay. Okay. Well, yeah, we only have twenty minutes left, we have to be out of this room, so the Zoom thing. So can please summarize your testimony? And, oh, yeah, and I guess all testifiers do need to wear masks as well. Okay, SCR 47, SR 42, requesting DHHL in conjunction with the County of Hawaii, Department of Water Supply, to provide a progress report regarding the development of a ka'ou water system. So we have DHHL in support, I think, SCR 47. Oh, I'm sorry. Aha Moku Advisory Committee in support. Was it, oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Limana.
Okay. Aloha. And again, to each chair's vice chair and members of the committee, Aha Moku stands to support of this resolution. However, we had two concerns I wanted to bring out. They're listed in our written testimony. One is the title of the resolution states that requesting the Department of Hawaiian Homeland to develop the ka'ou water system. And the second issue is that we needed to, to ask that the title and one of the result clauses be changed. So the first issue, ka'ou, and I'm from ka'ou, has twenty-six au'au. That's the entire ka'ou, moku. All of the twenty-six Hawaiian homes has homesteads on three of them, Ma'aleho, Waiohino, and Kalai. So the queries that I'm getting from the people is that, one, if the Hawaiian home is being requested to develop the entire ka'ou water system, that's unfair to the department, and we would not be in favor of that. If, if that is not going to be the case, then we are requesting that the title of this resolution be changed, or just be added. The title would then request seeing the Department of Hawaiian Homelands in conjunction with the County of Hawaii Department of Water Supply to provide a progress report regarding the development of the ka'ou water system on Hawaiian homelands. The addition would be on Hawaiian homelands. And the be resolved clause would reflect the change in that title, again stating that the progress report regarding the development of the ka'ou water system on Hawaiian homeland. Those are the two concerns with this. Otherwise, we fully support this resolution, and I will be available for questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks so much, Limana. DHHL?
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee, Leihua Kineal Kano, Department of Hawaiian Homelands. We submitted comments, our information is there. We also provided a copy of the progress report that was done in response to the SCR last year. And we would be amenable to the amendments that is being proposed by the Aha Moku.
Mahalo. Anyone else here for SCR 47, SR 42? Members, any questions? Okay, let's go with the last resolution. SCR 50, SR 45, designated the Waianae Moku Kupuna Council as an advisory source to elected members of the legislature of the state of Hawaii, representing the Waianae Moku community. We have Aha Moku Advisory Committee with comments.
Thank you, Chair. Our comments, we totally support the intent of this resolution. However, the Aha Moku already has a Kupuna Council in Waianae, and it is made up of the representatives of the Aha Moku representatives. However, we would welcome the opportunity to work with the Kupuna of this proposed Kupuna Council. I'm sure it's already, many of them probably belong to both. So we only had comments to state that we would be more than willing to work with the people as well. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think that was the only ones that signed up, or everyone has this written testimony. It's all in support. Is there anyone else that's here to testify on SCR 50, SR 45? Yes, couple.
Aloha. Aloha again, aloha me too, to share with you. I apologize, I have been to at least one of these meetings where our Kupuna have presented themselves. And this is a, a wide diversity group, or diverse group, many of which I am not familiar with, but I was very pleased to meet. And the intent that I had received from attending that meeting was that there is ek and mo'olelo that we have collectively. And so collectively, we can work together to share what these Kupuna are familiar with. I am not as familiar with the Aha Moku. And that is, again, my fault, because I have not observed or asked for any minutes or notes, although I'm certain that they are available. And we did appreciate our recently deceased Konuhiki Hanalei Hoppe. So we appreciated his time and all of their time. This resolution is an expression of our communities wanting a more diverse voice to participate in the decisions that are made at higher levels. We appreciate that the Aha Moku or Wa'ou is open and receptive to working with us, especially while right now we have a vacant seat. And it is also hopeful that once that seat is filled by someone that the Moku has designated as a whole, that we can have the diverse voices filter into that individual reps Konuhiki, to, so that our collective mana'o is shared. And I think that's something that maybe is not unique to Waianae, as we, our intent is to ensure that those of us that are not so much in the know can at least contribute in the process as it proceeds.
Mahalo. Okay, all right, seeing no other testimony, members, any questions? Now, we're going to.
I have a question for.
Oh, yes, Senator Casio, go ahead. Limana, are you still on? I'm wondering if you could speak up to your concern about potential conflicts between separate Moku councils, and how might such conflicts be resolved?
Thank you, Senator, for the question. It has been a pop pass, because people would just come out and create their own, their own local councils, but not follow the foundation and the structure that could not have been done on the Waianae. That particularly would not come to play, because I'm, I've been told that Kupuna that are on the Waianae Moku Council being proposed in this resolution are also Kupuna that are the Aha Moku, who, so to speak. And yes, Hanalei Hoppe was the Aha Moku representative for Waianae, and we miss his guidance. So the process that has been going, that the people are going for Waianae are very similar, I would think, in both. In bringing the diverse mana'o to, to the forefront, we agree with that, that, that should be done. However, in the Waianae State Aha Moku, each au'au has a representative, and that au'au representative focuses pretty much more on the natural and cultural resources of that au'au. And so that's where I see the conflict. If there isn't communication and people can talk to each other, then you have people from one Moku or one au'au making decisions for communities of another one. And, and what doesn't happen on Waianae, or that does happen on the New Islands. The other concern that was brought up is that if this resolution to go forward is the first of its kind in actually creating through the legislature a Kupuna Council. I'm not sure how that would play out later on. In the past, our concerns and our problems were with sovereignty groups that did not agree with working with the state of Hawaii in any way, forming their own Aha Moku groups, which is why we go under the Hawaii State Aha Moku. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, and just to follow up though, too, like, it just seems like, why wouldn't we allow this for all, all of the Aha Moku, as opposed to only Waianae? And then it seems like that opens up, I mean, could be a good thing. I'm not saying it's not a good thing, but just.
Waianae is different. The community is, is a close-knit one, so to speak. And on some of the neighbor islands, that is not the case. So if the legislature creates Aha Moku councils on every single Moku, then the council is made up of native Hawaiians, want to bring diversity to the, to the local system. The problem with that is that what is the diversity? We already work with the public trust. So we already work with other ethnic groups that are practitioners of Hawaiian practices. So I'm not sure what, what kind of diversity is to talk about. I think, I don't think we would be totally against it, but I think we would need to consult with each other more and try and find who they are to avoid the problems that we have been running in since 2012 with groups who decided they wanted to call the shots for their au'au through a Moku council. And the people of an au'au could not agree with that. That's where the problem is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you guys said we keep it real short, because we have to vote. Yeah.
I've attended numerous of these Kupuna councils in Poka'i Bay, and I, and I just recognize that it takes the place of the neighborhood board, right? And it's appropriate in that, as far as I can tell, it's, it goes, it gets past all the BS. And it, and it, it involves the conversation that is important to, I can only speak for myself, to me, right? And so I definitely would love to see that this Kupuna council be recognized. They, as far, in my experience, they, they only are concerned about Waianae. They're not trying to step outside of their Moku. They are inclusive. They bring anybody from anywhere to become part of the conversation, but their concern is Waianae Moku. Thank you.
Mahalo. Okay, we're going to go into decision-making. So for House Bill 2511, good recommend we defer this measure till Thursday, March 17, 1:01 PM in Room 16. SCR 46, 41, recommendation is to pass with amendments, having DHHL conduct the study instead. So are any concerns, questions? Okay, if I should take the vote.
Okay, members, voting on SCR 46, SR 41, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Shimabukuro?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Casio.
Reservations?
Senator Ihara, excuse, Senator Favel.
Reservations.
Chair, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. SCR 47, SR 42, recommendation to pass with amendments, those that were recommended by Aha Moku Advisory Committee. Yeah, that's what it means. Any discussion, question? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Members voting on SCR 47, SR 42, the recommendation is with this amendment.
Yes.
Yeah, passing with amendments. Senator Ihara is excused of the four members of the committee. Are there any with reservations? Any opposition? Seeing none, Chair, recommendation adopted.
Okay, and finally, SCR 50, SR 45, recommendations are passed with technical amendments. And then in the committee report, I'd like to summarize the testimony of Aha Moku Advisory Committee, and also encouraging the Kupuna Council to work with, you know, the AMAC, and also with Waianae Conference of, Coast Conference of Health Center has a Kupuna Council. I think there's a concern elders of Waianae group that was with Lucy Gay, and that, you know, work with them, and any other similar groups, just to collaborate, which you already do, and inclusive, which you already are. So, technical amendments, any discussion? Seeing none?
Members passing with amendments, with four members present, are there any reservations? Any opposition? Chair, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thanks so much, we are adjourned. Mahalo.